He heard the call, he heard the call from you to run for the Senate. I want you to get on the phone and welcome him at next time. From the first congressional district of the state, John Jackson. And so we have come, you know, we got shot down in the first, we got injured. We're so grateful to be here in the public mission here back in the first. This is like one of the top things that's always for almost six years. The past this long was a lot of rock and roll posters. He has been a lot of our best candidates, posters. His son was one of our folks. He had several generations with his daddy and mom of the posters. We had them out of love. And so we just sent out a train to get more passes to the first man. And so much of all this, the whole prayer from pastor and passengers, he's not going. Pass up, pass up. Pass up for right, for the end. So we're just going to come. Because we, he wants to see you, but you can't do it.
You would understand, and this is a day the Lord has made. And we should rejoice and be glad and understand. And you would mind this, wherever the Bible is, it will be written. Gracious God, because he's your brother, and this your house. And God, we believe that Jonathan Jackson is a person who should be on Congress. And we believe that you're with him, and you're called to confess your shining heart. He can help you keep him strong. Leave him in the back there in a supernatural wisdom and understanding. Be with him, God. Anytime you're in these positions, you have enemies, but hide away, hide away. And if you're in these things, we're praising, we're thanking, and the Lord shall be kind. Amen. If you don't got a clue, your hands are definitely not touching. You may be seated. I just want to say, I just want to say that I'm with Jonathan Jackson all the way. Amen. And I believe, I'm from the west side, anybody from the left side, my little south side. But I believe that John is going to win. Amen. That John was a blessing all in my control. But often today, I'm not a member of that city, they got a bad person. But on tonight, I give the thousand dollars, George and Mary Payton. And I'd like to, I want somebody to give more than that would make me feel good. But one, the decision to see how you can stay connected to this order, nothing but to Jonathan Jackson for congress.com. But whatever you do, you need to support your partner. So many times, our partners don't get the support that they deserve. But Jonathan deserves our support. I said I'll swallow that, you need to give your donation before you leave here today. Is that my donation? And it's a good chance.
For God, please be happy, Jackson. For that, Stephen Thurston, Stephen Jackson, Republican congressman, come on.
All right, listen, I think you know how to clap. Come on, come on, when you lift your hand, we are here tonight. And I pray that speakers, I ask God to continue to do what he's been doing through Jonathan Jackson. Come on, use your hands, use those hands. Now, we want you not only to use your hands, we need you to use those pens that you have. And we want you to get that shit book. Y'all know I'm a Baptist preacher, and every Sunday, I dare to, I know I did that money. They ever say me, and need you to commit what you have in our candidate's life. And giving what we have is what God has already opened the door for him. Come on, everybody, then go put those hands. And don't leave me here and take your money with you. Let's leave it right here for what we know is worthy of ourselves. I've got a check in my office for eight thousand dollars. Enjoy the bachelor dinner, to God be the glory. Come on, somebody, one more time. Go that way. Just like this. And you clap your hands. Just like this. I'm gonna say, say your name. Say your name. Say your name. Say your name. Keep on, keep on that way. Sometimes, keep on working, that's what it is, what it's worth. Keep on saying, keep on doing what you love. Say it again, I'm done, I'm done. I won't say, keep on that way. Oh, my dear, don't say that again. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Keep on saying, keep on doing what you love. Say it again, I'm done, I'm done. Oh, sometimes, let it ride. There's no other way to hold myself now. Sometimes, I'm going to do it, we gotta keep on that way. Whoa, whoa, whoa. I'm done, I'm done. Say your name. Your name. Say your name. Your name. Say your name. Your name. Say your name. Oh, sometimes, let it ride. There's no other way to hold myself now. Sometimes, I'm going to do it, we gotta keep on that way. Whoa.
It's not this, it's a damn holy air, but it's comfortable, I'm alive, okay? All right? All right, okay. Maybe this is all going to be restricted by our purpose right now, but I share with people we post out here. Very close in this chair, we might hope. Please get back to our host and hostesses, our community questions anymore, okay? All right, love you, love you, love you. Okay, I'm gonna ask each journalist a question on whose can you talk. And then we're gonna have to vote you respond. Each journalist has nine seconds to put up their question. And then you're gonna have nine seconds to react, to respond. And so we're very, very excited about that, and I want you to go, wanting to go just a little bit more. And as time comes, we are looking at what is gonna be these questions from you. Good Lord, God, economy, inflation, anytime, anytime you guys want, you say yeah. All right, and you can, you can say yeah. All right, and what about, what about, what about, what about, what about? And then they're gonna sit with us, what about infrastructure? What about climate, and the environment, and the violence? We're gonna talk about all of those things tonight. So, get going, son, and for the evening from our camp, from the next house, from the first congressional district of the state, John Jackson.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to give you a quick update. And Jonathan Jackson will be with Congress for the first congressional district. This is the first day of early Monday, June 13th. I think it needs everyone of you for coming out. We just started a campaign this election in March. So this is the first time it's being held in June. June 28th is the final day of voting. This is it today, so also let us galvanize our community. Call somebody, wake somebody up, make a commitment to call 10 people. If you can make a commitment to call 10 people, family and friends, some people don't know about the day. I'm running on guns, gas, groceries. We have a problem here on the south side. The south side, the first congressional district, is in pain. It is one of the districts that has a host disparity in life expectancy in the entire United States of America. From people who live in edge waters, 30 years' life expectancy and difference. We have a big, big challenge in our district, the models that are third world communities. We are a generation that, I see your goal, I see this opportunity to go to Washington, to be their representative, to be on the field, to be under the umbrella, to argue your case. I would like to give a very special compliment to my friend and pastor, Reverend Stephen Thurston, who opened up his church and let us be here receiving in the honorable division of Chicago. Like I said, my friend has the hoggies there, opening us up today, and that's the hoggies to be, brother, and friend, brother. And I see a child that's standing behind me, Mr. Rupert J. Derrick Anderson, sitting in the back. Thank you, Rupert Anderson, for being here today. So we're moving towards the finish line, and we are so excited. Amazing things that happened in these last, if you will, little days. Congressman Bobby Rush has announced that he will no longer see the office after 30 years of service. So this is a surprise to me, after 30 days of deliberation, who died into this race on February 7th. I want to say a very special thank you to Congressman Bobby Rush, who went to play by the time of Biden, who called him in the home pocket. For his 30 years of service, it's the first congressional district. He did not know that I could participate in work. By February 7th, when I think my hand into the ring, we started getting petitions, that's so many of you. Here today, he helped us. By March 7th, he broke down the street field, trying to get the most petition in the least amount of time, most comfortably. We ended up helping out the people. And I want to thank you, so good to live this day, and you gave it to us all. And along the way, we ended up getting to international, amalgamated, transsexual community workers. This is community for the bus drivers and the CTA claim operators. I heard that it all from the channel from the 57 years ago, from Manhattan. I come to find out that women were both the CTA bus drivers. Their buses all night long, and going into very dangerous neighborhoods, to have to get to the end of the line and turn the bus around and wait for 20 minutes. Because some of them did not, we had order prices and no places for the women to believe herself. Women had to wear diapers, these are transsexual workers. When you see, maybe even operating these trains. One person responsible for eight cars, and our trading system is another second part of shelter of homeless people in our city. So I thank God that the trans world, the international, has enabled us, so this is for trans workers, all the transportation, help, all the way, I thank you. Also, I want to thank the protective areas, mutual pact, I want to thank them. I want to thank the Chicago teachers, I want to thank Congressmen in the Mexico water, who has the worst support. I want to thank my friend Congressman Benny Thompson, who is this city, who you see on the seventh great valley, leading the state quarter city commission, he evolved his name, Congressman Benny Thompson. I want to thank my friend, Congressman Chulio Garcia, who's been a tailor, but I don't think he needed it. I want to thank Congressman Brokerson from San Francisco, who came in here to endorse and support. I want to thank my friend Congressman Benny Davis, who has been a mentor and a friend for so many years. And I want to thank my special friend Commissioner Stan Mark, the first thing I like, your permission to stand with me. I love the community that you, Commissioner Stan Mark. And this week, later on in the week, we got another surprise. A gentleman that had supported my father with that team, they did, a Caucasian man, Barack, who endorsed him, but he was a bear, because of the bracket, because he believed in the platform. The word Jesse Jackson is standing for is not besides endorsing me. I'm honored to see and accept the endorsement of Mr. Senator Bernie Sanders on this country, our country. The president today is a member of the Jack and the Jackson, loving him, thank you for it. Also, as you can see, open the door today to stand up, true for, not with us today, but certainly supported us by our brother Jesse Jackson. And our first person, our fellow candidate, Senator E. Joe Trump, I'm excited to run back. And I see my sister sitting in the house today, Mr. Joe Jackson, standing up in front of her. I need your vote on Jonathan Jackson, I have to be this message, to keep him there for the rest. Thank my sister, thank you, Eric.
Well, let us get to it. We have got two of the nation's oldest senior members on the Capitol today. Some of you don't know Jonathan at all from our minds. The Washington Congress, he's been in some sort of glory, he's been, he's been, he's been president and CEO of Chicago, leading the worldwide hardworking movement, accomplished, of the radio, magazine, he's been on the radio, there's a lot. And of course, Chicago, same, the city has a very job for living, that's all I want. And we want to start with John, he had a place to start. So I can start, so John, my friend, what is the nice thing that I have, that you? What's the first one for any person? And then let me give you a historical tip. The first congressional district is the most senior district in America for black, white, and African Americans. So what's the nice thing that I have, that you want, that you, that's my first question about John.
Our nation is dependent. I saw this, I think that you saw, January 6th. The Capitol dead is for a lot of things. He would certainly cut a soul, and turned back the hangings of time. We're running the kingdom now, in the end, 54 years. One of his chronic achievements in work on our organization, always riding up with the older rock stacks. We have gone from securely direct to gold, now to which we're seeing the 2022 election cycle and 2023. Because of the weapons of money going into the separate state races and attorney general races across the nation. Now the fight is going to be, who gets to count the votes? So when I lived there, where I was my life, 56 years, and I've been living so much, so fortunate, and been so blessed, to whom much is given, much is required, I thought this was the highest and best use of my time and my talent to hit the floor of the Congress to be a voice. One of the things that's amazing about the first congressional district is this district is 54% African American, 38% Caucasian, 8% Hispanic. Let me give you that in context. Congressman Max Staley, largest district, is 28% African American. Senator, Congressman Benny Davis's district is just over 40% African American. From this seat, from this platform, we can talk about Afghanistan, Ukraine, and Haiti, all of which matter to me. So I started my presidency because it's in, that all of my experience could be the best unit at this time to bring your business relationships in, with common people, or common owners, bring your living relationships in, and bring your church community and our citizens community together, and forge a brighter path for our children. That's my motivation.
Hey, Johnson.
Thank you, and I thank all of you for coming and making it for your own. Inflation is hitting us at supermarkets and the gas outlets. Wall Street is getting a meeting with Royal Center, whatever, of recession. What plans do you have as a dad to address inflation and to make sure that underserved communities are not homeless?
I hope everyone has heard your question about inflation, making sure underserved communities are not homeless, and what is it that we can do in the Congress about it? First of all, when we think of rising wage, it's $15 per hour. If you want to live an annual income level an hour, $15 an hour means $30,000 annually. So you're likely to have inflation in the economy when wages go up, they would set that, with price attack going across the board. And now we need to go from a living wage, a minimum wage, to a living wage, and something even higher if we have steel. So now we're about to get from, and this is something that has kept me up on more than one occasion a night, our people that have the least of under skills, that are in the highest service industries, are going to bear the most impact of rising inflation. Why? Because they don't have assets. Assets are a hint against inflation, that's why our law's written on property. The most person that owns property have immense insulation against inflation. We have to make sure that people have adequate food, transportation to work, and housing. How can you resolve this issue? The federal government has to do for people when they cannot do for themselves. The federal government has to step up. The federal government's budget is coming to a single, when things are good, the private sector continues to invest. When things are bad, the government has to invest, because people cannot make it on their own. So the government has to have something to say about the energy prices. Now, I think the energy market is pretty strange, and I feel that a lot of people are buying, where we're at, it's strange. The oil that left in U. Crown and the Minnesota region can't even make it to the shore of the river again. When mobile has $8 billion of profits, and then the price of oil is just over $100 a barrel, why are they making greater profits? They are profit-gapping. That's why I stand with Senator Bernie Sanders. They are making, they do the profit at the expense of the poor. When we talk about inflation, some people want a house, others don't, but everyone deserves adequate shelter. The federal government has to have something to say about housing, urban development, to make sure that they have adequate housing supplies, built along 20 grids, so that we can get to work. Business predict the almost the life expectancy, I think it's very good, the rural cheap, more important than rural where you live. If you live in an area that's isolated, that does not have access to the next main protection, and you do not have private transportation, you cannot get to hospital, you cannot get to after-school programs, you have limited options on work, we have to make sure the workers that are part of the team cannot get pushed onto an island of poverty around an ocean of influence. So that is something that is very much important for people. Inflation, we see the federal rate is very great, that's on the front, it's coming down, but there is a topic gathering that is real, you're sitting rich, going up, there's a venture called ALICE. And those are words that create the acronym for asset limited income employer. What does that mean, asset limited income employer? That simply means that if you look at the federal poverty model, that's what you said. They're basically saying that if you're getting paid for this, making $80, $70, you're not living in poverty. You figure that out? But when it doesn't show this, those that work for you today that don't have a financial need, if you look at the breakfast factory, 50% of the money is making less than $20 a dollar. 35% of the money is not coming out of money to make it to the end of the week. 100 million Americans spend $30 on $2,000 at the end of the month, and they better work for everything. This is why we have to raise wages, bring jobs back into this area, fight this, gun service, so that we can be in hospitals and businesses, I hope that answers your question.
What do you think of this from President Biden, signing another situation, a $10,000 prayer, excuse me, the logo? Does that do enough?
The question regarding student loans, and President Biden wanted to take $10,000 off for credits of history, not to student loan bill. Flashback in history, in 2006, 2005, President George Bush passed a bankruptcy reform bill. In the bankruptcy reform bill, all other forms of debt can be included, except for tax debt and student loan debt. You can go into businesses and collect bankruptcy and wipe it off. You can buy into a car, so you start businesses, and you can wipe it off. But when they did, well, they ended up putting that as a bonus bill on our student. The student debt market was roughly 400 The, uh, the student debt market was roughly four hundred billion dollars in twenty-oh-six. Now, the federal student debt market is one point eight trillion in the T. What happened? That under vision came along. I think we should go back and revisit that law because the person that were most taken advantage of, not only our students, but our veterans. Veterans were targeted by four part of colleges that were having a fifty percent drug offering and that they were being penalized into a lifetime debt from a private corporation. First, I say let's eliminate the debt for all the veterans that are due by four part of education. The second part of that, of what the Biden administration do, I would say would like to make sure that students can take out a loan. I never thought students take out a loan through school. I just want to see the interest received from the principal. The interest on the federal student loans should be eliminated. It should be guaranteed by the government at one point. But the student take out a loan, I think there's some character building. I think it's an asset, it's my opinion, because the, uh, loan loan is an asset that you can convert to higher wages and things like that. There was something that was seen before, but now it's broken. It's for profit, and that's all. And I also think that if they had to look at, where are the fees at? We live in a Latin American society where you couldn't make it after high school. Now you're in post-high school education and third grade education. I would want to look at developed minds as our strongest American asset. Therefore, for chocolate, they will mind, they will buy, they can learn. The doors of opportunity of education should be open. And I don't care if they have to put in money in the government to fix that. I don't want to see teacher doctor to try to gain some finesse in the receivers and the, uh, military that are all over the country. So the student loan debt, thank you for whatever you order, limiting the interest rate upon it. Uh, ten dollars for this is really moving the needle. I mean, we've got to have something that corresponds to the order of magnitude of the problem. Which is a little bit eight trillion dollars that is altering our children's imagination and my expectancy on what they are going to do. When I was teaching in Chicago State, I would ask the students, so, uh, questions on the love of money and institutions, anybody happy with all of that and stuff? Like, anybody named before Valentine's Day? And then I'm like, okay, no one is happy. And I said, does it matter if your girlfriend or spouse has a lot of student loan debt, you carry it? And they'd say, hey, hey, I'm not embarrassed, somebody that has a lot of student loan debt. So it's even affected the relationship market, having too much student loan debt. We need first, third, and the future of that.
So, uh, on society, we are taking vast changes. We are really living or having a third revolution. We've gone at cost, we've gone service, and we're now in digital. Uh, we are seeing some industries change. We come out to new generations for that, because now it's digital. We see the public go from network to free. We see the movie industry go free. We're looking at, what is that? Is this the story?
Is this the story?
Uh, we're becoming, uh, flesh and bone. So, uh, what would you do? And I'm thinking of the olive, the movement from gas cars to electric cars. All of them are going to be on the street. They're going to be computer operators. So my question is, what would you do as Congress for new jobs? A lot of jobs, obviously, the training is necessary for them to stay in the industry and to say, uh, if you don't believe that, this isn't about baseball. You do that based on every thought. For so many, what do you do to train or retrain people into new jobs?
Excellent. That begs the question on how do you see the future? I can argue and share my thoughts on something that has had most recently. Ford Motor Company, under the leadership of Bill Ford, has taken Ford Motor Company to Western Tennessee. Ford Motor Company left Western Tennessee outside of America seventeen years ago in nineteen fifty-two. Now Ford Motor Company is building another billion-dollar manufacturing plant in Western Tennessee, right outside of Texas. They're taking six thousand electric vehicle jobs. But most importantly, Ford Motor Company is taking United Auto Workers with them. New job to move into the South. That has not happened in over seventy years. We started our ground. We go through a period of all short. It was that common theory, uh, probably made by those that were in Chicago. Their confidence was long, man, it's long now. The theory says, we're going to do plenty of jobs because we're smart. Other people will do the dirty job. And America's always going to have this sort of capacity in the future for economic crisis. That's how it works. Innovation comes off the factory floor. Those are the persons of manufacturing, people that have been also in America. This is why China is surging again. It starts with, we believe President China says, we're going from made in China to invented in China. They now want to have leadership in this area. How do you see the future? The combustible engine is coming towards its demise. Ford Motor Company is building electric vehicle capacity in Western Tennessee. How do you ever know when this goes six thousand dollars? They are going back to the place they live and who already have automobile production and capacity here. One of the things you have to do to the Congress is you have to redraw to those corporate CEOs, executives, and ambassadors. What can you do to make our market more friendly? How can we, uh, even more say, what skills would we need to make sure that we push through our economy, the power system? If we push through our power system so that we can bring them down? One of the things I'm very excited about, you're going to go current, when you came to Chicago, there are two million cybersecurity jobs needed now. He's part of a partnership with, uh, Benedict College in Columbia, South Carolina, and with Zoom, and with Google, to bring tech job to those who score the black hour. We can bring those same jobs to the Congress, and they can do it. Looking at the future, did you know that division is fourteen thousand airline pilots short?
Oh.
We need fourteen thousand pilots. Did you know there is a shortage of bus blocks? Did you know there is a shortage of train hours? Did you know none of the people are trying to become policemen? We have a place to be booked, so we see these children and these young adults that have nothing to do. I don't blame them. I take responsibility upon myself. Something happened to their life. We've got to go back to that workforce and bring them back to the workforce. We even have naked without a dent. Now, the other side of that is what's happening with prisons and incarceration. We're not the five percent of the world's population, twenty-five percent of the world's incarcerated. The vessels of slavery are real. I don't want to go to that shit, the nation's gone. How do we get rid of it and so forth? Of course, we have to do that. I've got a video search that's fun, so those citizens have all their rights to store. It doesn't have to be another agency while you're hanging up people's lives. I know people that are finishing dinner, and I never had a turn to walk and see you leave. You need to say, we're kidding that. Make the world a city so that everybody's happy to be young and willing. So we have got to fight for that. But we have to have a look at the future. Uh, but right now, we're not in a great. Five G is now coming into existence. We've seen one G, two G, three G, four G, five G, ten G for generation. And what does that mean? That means speed is the top old lexicon. Five G is real and is happening now. We do not have adequate broadband speed. One of the things I will fight for is universal broadband. You should have access to get online. If the government, the Navy, is getting online for services, then it should give you the keys to access, hey, so that you can use the service.
Hold on, just one second here. Two-minute break. We'll go ahead and play this back.
If you don't mind. Come on. I'm going to check your face, won't you? Yeah, guys. Oh, this. My mother's. Best day of my life. Oh. But I'm not the one that loves us. There's one who can't get out. My baby. You will be inspired away. Waiting, I know I can be there. My love's on the fire. We don't refuse to last a day. Oh. What's my answer? All the others come away. Yes. You told me that I'm the way. Free, that's all I can be today. If I turn, if I turn, don't watch the sun. With your eyes, talk to me, yeah. See me, what's on my mind? Oh, my mother's. What's on my mind? I am so little, so beautiful. Y'all hear? Hey. I do love my life. Everything is a great man in the world. Oh, my fool, I'm begging you, God. Such things are made to form my life. But I'm not home. You know, that's right. Waiting, I can't be there today. We can last. We can be silent, we can be silent. We, we, we don't try to keep home. You can see. So, oh. What's on my mind? 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 Yeah. Oh. What's on my mind? What's on my mind? Come here. What's on my mind? No, 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 no. No, 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 no. Oh. Come on, you can, you can. Come on, come on, come on. One, two, three, and. Come on, come on, come on. It's a celebration. 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 You can have somebody for my. Again, it's only my one chance. Again, it's all the last thing. Everybody's taking girls, I want free, yeah. It's all about my idea. It's all about my soul. The fire. I'm not the one. Oh. I'm the one. Yeah. Hey. You're the one. Oh. My. Everybody's taking girls, I want free. What's on my mind? I'm the one. You should be sad, but I hate it. You should be sad, but I hate it. What I want to say, I'm the one. Baby. Where's your money? Where's the car? What? Hey. I'm the one. Oh. Hey. Hey. I'm the one. Hey. They're looking at something. Oh, oh. Hey, yeah. Oh, my room, not you, baby. Oh, my church, yeah. I'm the one, not you, baby. Oh, my room, hey, yeah. Why, why, not you, baby. I hope you're not a bad, hey, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Who knows? Who knows? Oh, yeah. Oh, oh, my heart. Oh, my, 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 my. You're the one. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. I'm the one. I'm the one. Oh, I'm the one. Yeah. I'm the one. Come on. Hey, yeah. But I'm the one. I'm the one. Hey, yeah. Oh, I'm the one. I'm the one. Hey, yeah. Woo. I'm the one. Ah. I'm the one. Oh, I'm the one. Hey, yeah.
All right. Can y'all hear that? All right, all right. I'm standing here because I'm a. I'm standing here because I'm at this bridge and I need some money. Y'all ain't even gonna say anything. Alright, listen, we all want to leave here tonight without some financial support for our candidate. Come on, clap your hands. Wonderful, wonderful. I want you to write it down and if you just cannot give tonight, I want you to write it down so that when you can give it, you'll know how to make your check out. Jonathan Jackson for Congress. You can show, you should pay. If you get that. Some of you are just like my people. When I look at bridges, they're saying nothing, they don't help them. Jonathan Jackson for Congress. Come on, you should. Yeah, everybody. Yeah, everybody. And if you can, if you can this night, we want you to give what will be support for our candidate. And we are going to use that for this wonderful candidate. I need everybody to clap your hands in here for our candidates.
Thank you, Pastor, Pastor, Pastor. And being with me before, I appreciate you. Both appreciate you, Pastor, Pastor. I like coming here from here, from the bottom. You know him as Commissioner Brandon Johnson from Cook County. But I know him as a teacher and organizer. And he's led our youth in a magnificent way, the son of a minister who is taking advocacy into the halls of our schools and to the corridor of power that the county government. My friend, he also voted for me to become a representative and to receive the endorsement from the Chicago TV. A man I am truly grateful for, Brother Commissioner Brandon Johnson. Oh, that's all. So Pastor, Pastor, I do apologize to fans. Like, for Brown, I was very sorry about the rights. You gotta keep the condom on. You see, they come with a whole new thing. I love those. I think I'm looking on the vision. But if you need Southside, I do apologize to fans. Uh, I was just outside, I'm not going indoors because I had my own reelection secure. I watched for the Southside because, like, I really do all. Not just the Lord, but a very, very huge Jonathan Jackson. But I will say briefly, when I had the opportunity to meet Jonathan, of course, I lived with his father, his mother, and his sister, Santhita, who is a dear friend of mine. I always knew he'd end to Santhita. And so when I met Jonathan, you know when we come across a few folks where every now and then you just need someone to cheer you on along the way? You just need someone from the nerd community to just get a good system to help. And what I've come to discover in the midst of this political climate that we're in right now, we need something radical and honest. That radical idea is based off of something that covers all the multitudes of wickedness. Here are your pastors, this is your work right here. Is you need someone that you can love unconditionally and lead with that head of mass. And see, here's why I have Jonathan. Certainly, there's one that was in the classroom. We were faced with our own dilemma. Someone who did not believe in the common sense of a generation. And even before the school closures that were, like, frankly, we used to get a still very glad. Why should black parents get on the bus on a Tuesday night at nine o'clock in the middle of the winter to make a case about their school, knowing that their school was unimportant? And it was from that experience that actually rocked a lot for me. Because the midst of that closure, do you all know that there are still not thousands of white children that we have known of? We literally do not know who they are. And with the political establishment at the time did not find it very attractive to handle our teachers, Jonathan Jackson's there. Jonathan Jackson, he did set the stage for the moral argument of why black, black children, the black children in particular, deserve a school system that's looking to invest in them, that's Jonathan Jackson. With the school system being marginalized, when people were finding ways to cover poverty off of the pain and suffering of black children, it was Jonathan Jackson. When David Byton, the board chair, he could use my energy to make dollars a week from the school district, it was Jonathan Jackson. He's very confident in understanding the math that set the news up for, right, just what you're doing. Jonathan was there. And so I guess all I can say at this point is, let's do ourselves a service in this moment by sending someone to the Congress who's supposed to do something radical. He's gonna hear, he's gonna listen, and he's gonna fight with their voices, whether it's on the House or on the House of Lords. My name is Brandon Johnson, both my name is Mr. and the person guy, right? Thank you very much.
Put your hands together for Commissioner Brandon Johnson. Also, he's a wonderful T V T. Everything he's done, he's always been nine hundred eighty man. He was a lot around here today. As you move forward, we don't want to be talking about, talking. And another man, more men today, who are both being worried, Eric Johnson, who's hardly even looking at. Man, get it? Eric Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you. This is the last of Chicago that the nation has ever had. It's unfortunately affected a lot of the nation. What is your plan to address health care disparities post-pandemic America?
The question was, what would be my plan to address health care disparities in American in the post-pandemic American?
American. American.
In the post-pandemic American. Number one, I'm telling you, the pandemic is not over. Covid, by its various nature, this virus is one of these things that is only this long. Quarantine, wraparound. So you will be seeing a surge in the fall. Quarantine, these, uh, this, uh, virus spikes when it's indoors. But you're a bit of a greedy, greedy of asking, please save that stuff, save it. And there are other pandemics that continues to be going to affect our human race as well. With the advent of this climate change, if you were to look at all the people that were forced into migration, this is far too many for me. People that have been forced into migration, had to leave their country because of war or because of the climate no longer makes your environment happy. Two hundred and eighty million people would fit that description, which would be the fifth largest country on Earth and it's getting to grow. There are certain regions where people no longer live that you want to hear more about. All of the pandemic, I don't like to think about this. It's also a business problem. How do you get to the front side of it? When the big, bad, better program was first initiated with three forty six trillion dollars? One line I had written there was for thirty million dollars on pandemic prevention. I know people don't care to spend money on things like insurance and other things because it looks like it's a beautiful day. But as soon as your house goes, as soon as your car gets in mess, as soon as you get sick, you realize you need some insurance. And then the doctor tells you, you should have been more preventative. You lose some weight, you drink some water, you should do some practice, well, run a shirt. On the first side of this, if we put the money back into the budget for pandemic prevention, the person Trump can take it out. We can have three million dollar debt allocated for the next ten years to find out what these outbreaks are happening. This will be a thirty million dollar problem and not a ten trillion dollar problem. More than thirty six dollars in our economy now is moving to the healthcare system. Do we have adequate healthcare on the Southside? Most of these hospitals now do not have a maternity ward that is fully functioning to deal with the pregnancy or our women that will have bone birthright children. I don't want to start a problem naming the hospital, but it's still desirable if we don't raise, if God's will, we're going to organize some best conferences in some of these hospitals that are essential, essential to our careers. This is why we're here, we're trying to get through the world country right here within walking distance of this church tonight. So, the pandemic is not over. What can we do to commit? We have to have adequate health system. I stand here at Senator Bernie Sanders in the Medicare for All. Everyone deserves access to health care. With the pandemic started, the park started being built up. The first person to die was an African-American woman and nurse that was retired in England. How many of our teachers do not have access to adequate hospitalization after retirement? So, everybody needs access to healthcare. And that's no longer be approved, but in fact, it's American right.
And the country, so, your thoughts on whether the president can come to the country and that is the right for women to have abortions?
The right for women to have an abortion. I would like to see the government, out of people's bedrooms, and I would like to see the government take their meaning all of women. Simply, that is going to be used to the Trojan horse to start taking other rights away from people. There's a long story history for the tech and women. And I find it very curious that, uh, they are all concerned about standing up for women if they don't stand up to the gun office. I think that there is inadequate man that loves to protect women and their rights over their body. They don't want to stand up against the things that have been introduced and that are killing women. But I say for qualifying the voter for reelection.
I wanted to move the discussion slightly to slave reparations. Many whites became millionaires, often slaves, pre-labor. And after a failed reconstruction, black code, segregation, red diet, here we are, twenty twenty-two. And our leaders in Congress, many times others that I've not addressed that we should be compensated for slave reparations. Will you, as candidate of Congress, how much will you push for slave reparations? And for all African-Americans in this country?
The question is for reparations and how much will I push? My honor, your respect to the late, great Congressman John Conley, who addressed the H R bill for forty acres and abhumed the spirit of that bill on receiving it. Congressman John Conley, from Detroit, gave us the king national holiday. It was good for America. Why do we need to discuss reparations? Why do we need to have a formula to deal with reparations? Because the harm is clear. From sixteen nineteen to eighteen sixty-five, two hundred and forty-six years, African-Americans were at the foundation, at the base of America, and we were exploited and robbed. I don't start our history with slavery. We are Americans, fully vested, fully blooded, and have the ability to fully get our benefits in this country. I don't start with my grandmother, mother, or something less than, and that was when someone else died. She was always a full human being in my eyes. Why do we need to change this to be correct? Because white children need to know this well. They are born into a world where there's a billion and two Chinese, a billion and two, uh, people in India. And half the world is Asian. People aren't born for this ideology of black supremacy. They need to understand that we do not have a hierarchy, and they do not have a secondary order. So when you talk about reparations, reparations, we have to talk about institutions that are still fights that still rob African-Americans. And you don't have to go back a hundred years. You can start with, what African-Americans so for? You can be born two weeks ago, robbed every day. When we go to pay for insurance, chocolate, healthcare, medicine, they have transportation, you can do it also. So we can rob systemically. When we go outside of this building and we don't have access to a last train, a bus or train within twenty minutes, that's called second service. That's not last train. When you see train lines shut down on Sixty Third Street in St. Louis, and the CCA is not going to the southeast side or to the far south side or to the far south west side, they have to go to both Portland, Illinois, Memphis, Illinois, St. Louis, Illinois. These are all institutions that have stayed in place, that keep us poor. So therefore, we have to pay for cars because you don't have access to the last train and money. When I hear senior citizens out of neighborhoods right here don't have access to warm rooms and C D Ss with the mind of this girl. This is why I run. Reparations is absolutely imperative. Does that need a check or this or that? I would say, I would remind you, this is only institutions. How does that look? That means carpet out, the hardest hit neighborhoods. Look at the zip code, zip, which is a briefly conceived Z I P filter, the zone improvement plan. You can take this back, they're frankly, whatever they, uh, trying to find affection to see, go back to where the people are of course. There is not one district, there is not one community in the city of Chicago where white folk are. That's structural. Why? Because they have city jobs, fire jobs, police jobs, public service jobs. We need to go to the neighborhood to the hardest hit and have a job elsewhere for a hundred million dollars for a job. Federal workway. Can't you conceive that we can give fifty thousand students in C D S that are impoverished, two thousand dollars for the summer? We can create work. That much should not simply go to police and municipal workers all the time. These children need to get introduced to the workforce and be able to make some money. Police outside in twenty twenty-one was a hundred and fifty million dollars. If you want to think about monetizing, can you imagine a program to give fifty thousand students, children in high school, organized work, play their instruments, make some art, clean up the park, ditch flag tires? We live in poison and got them made to the work floor. That's our money for poverty. Now, listen here, we want to take a break for you. Right? We can do a lot of work, I'm not going to lose out of this. Let's just, we can do a power move. Power move, we're pushing the works to the left. We're just going to give you a power, a power to all citizens of Washington, Washington.
We are never going to talk about violence and terrorists, specifically not by someone who has experienced it. Very different hours, the fire camera, Bishop Jenkins, has been a leader as they've only came back in fourteen decades. But he has helped so much. And so he'll do a good job, he's a fool, and share with us both stories.
Well, thank you, everyone, same to you, and thank you for much time. It's been a long time for this gentleman to do that, right? It's pretty young. I think I want to say that we support Jonathan Jackson. Uh, your, uh, his operating push. We, your, like, same, be your show, and we support Jonathan Jackson for what he's doing. And it is so important, and we heard some of the things they talked about today. He is spot on, everything's wonderful. And I am, uh, astounded that, um, that he's so, so good on these issues, he's got it down. He can talk about this stuff, he can do, can see it. He is, he's a brilliant young man, he's, he's, he's a great finisher. He is a great guy. Uh, this is picture of my son. My son, wait, he was sixteen years old, he shot through. He worked at a restaurant. He wasn't a wrong place for a father. And then he died while he was in a restaurant, was in a wrong place, at a wrong time, doing the wrong thing. He had a gun, he got way too easy. He is party for a friend. Saw the party, think about, walk out, go, this should not be possible. And the number of guns in this country, now exceeds the number of people in this country. Okay, so I have a gun. I mean, you might have a gun, some guns are excellent. Right? They're not there. People who should not have. They're floating around, they're being sold food, they're being sold on the news market. By the way, I just had a corporate man on the south side, uh, just the other day, for a gun buyback program. People were trying to mean assault weapons. I mean, this is just out of control. And it's not just the politicians that make money for gun industry so that the gun industry can have nice, easy laws, unlike other countries where they do actually stand up for the gun industry and have a safe environment for their benefit. But then they should pay so obviously, and a lot of this pay, they pay for the campaigns and the competitions of the way they want them to. They don't vote the way they need them to. Jonathan Jackson doesn't vote the way they need him to. Because he knew he was safe now. Home must be the safest place we have. It must be safe. There are a lot of things that we are almost not being safe. And you're not allowed to like, but I would totally, when we have this many guns, people are going to shut. And we have to do something about the number of guns in the country, but that's not all. We also know that gun violence is highest in areas with high sun climate. We know gun violence is highest in the areas where there's a very tough. We know gun violence is highest in areas where people are stressed beyond belief. And as a result, you put those two together, and you have an epidemic. You have an epidemic of the other. Police officers shooting more people than they did when my son was still forty years old. Why? Because people were scared. And the police are scared. But we would rather pay the police more money than to put it into solving problems of other parts, solving problems of other part, solving problems of stress in the home. That's not the right way. We need to solve the problem that exists in our society. And I do believe with all my heart, Jonathan Jackson's name is certainly in this. Thank you, David, for talking. Thank you, ladies, gentlemen, for storing, with the tragedy, which is a horrible thing for us to go through. And I don't want anybody else to go through it. But I also know statistically, since this day began, ten people have already been killed by guns in this time. And more will be killed by the end of this year. And those standards are hurt. And we need to stop that hurt. We need to work on the problems of society. We need to get guns out of the hands of people who shouldn't have them. And we need to get Jonathan Jackson, get it, guys.
What a powerful, 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 powerful testimony. Yeah, I think, uh, I think.
I've got two questions for you. Long as that is fine. First is, what would you do if you made law and strong back? So many of them use the matches. Now, for, for the master's case, uh, um. Is this on, okay, now, the, the black person, he gave you crime. Reason he did that is his mother was poor, his father went to jail, he was dead, he needed, his mother was dead, he needed. She was a parent, and would have all these stereotypical things, it may not be untrue, but my point is that black folk has stereotype. Question is, what does the white folk have? What is his stereotype? Middle class, he was a pro, middle class, he was, that he had, uh, perhaps suicidal, perhaps a teacher saw something, but nobody did anything. A dyer, and all the more, that profile does not get discussed in the public square. My question is, what would you do? I don't know why you need a war weapon if you're not going to shoot people for war. So these are your own harmful people. But what would you do? What can you do as a congressman for education, such people, number one? And stop, number two, and here's what, here's the follow-up question to that. We see these matches, these children kill, people kill. The government needs to ban them. The government needs to step up for those families. This is the path for these families. Blair talks about this all the time, is that the person dies, but the family suffers. And it's a lifelong suffering, it's not short getting, it be alright anymore, it's never alright. And the government needs to step up and do something. So that's the concept.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And we're going to be out here about another special theme, six to eight, World's Prize. And if you stick around, you can hear another song, so we don't leave too soon. What can we do about these guns? That AR-15 is a military-grade weapon that is specifically designed to kill people. What we saw happened in Texas. I don't want to call this young man an eighteen-year-old. I want to call him seventeen plus one day. He got a shotgun from his parents when he was sixteen. And when he was seventeen years old, his dream was to turn eighteen to buy this assault weapon. And right at his eighteenth birthday, he was able to get a gun, an assault rifle, that the police cannot even use. To let you know how backward our society is turning. People are upset with the police because they didn't run in there fast enough. And all fairness to police is, don't get out of submission. And I'll be the first one to speak up and power their pitches. But within a three-minute time span, before they could wait for half an hour, with the shooting within three minutes, they have to try to stop, cancel, get it killed, contain the person inside, get some backup. It's total collapse. And people are upset with the police and not with the child that had access to an assault rifle. We should put our anger towards the access to the guns, not towards the all of it. They're all paying for the murder that they did. And all the respective positions, right? They have a nine-hundred meter, this guy has an assault weapon that can let go of thirty bullets in four seconds. Let's get those guns off the street. Now, when we look at what happened in San Diego, when we look at what happened to the City of Atlanta and Pittsburgh, when we look at what happened to the grocery store in Carlisle, when we look at what happened in Texas, and we look at what happened in Buffalo, what's the commonality? AR-15 assault rifles. The federal government should ban that, that's bigger than the Chicago Police Department, that's bigger than the local state police. That's a federal issue to put a ban on that level of weapon. That's the first part. The second part, why is our society so violent? And I don't want us to complain the issue. Now, that is a clever PR spin to say anyone that does a mass shooting have mental issues. Not true. People that have mental issues, America don't have more mental issues than any other country on earth. What we do have is easier access to guns. That has to be dealt with very specifically. We know where those guns are coming from in the Chicago land area. Trump's gun shop in Riverdale has eighty percent of the guns that are traced back to murder. There's not one gun shop in the city of Chicago, there's not a gun range in the city of Chicago, there's not one African American at Mission Field anywhere in the world. How are these guns flowing into our city? And you know, we divide them on seventy-nine, eighty-seven, right at the border. We need to have a gun bustle and not just a drug bustle. I have a concern there too. I don't want these things to be robbing downtown, downtown. I want to fix the problem, not fix the gun. What do I mean by that? Of course, our children should be doing certain things downtown. We deal with the horror of horrific stories every week of these shoots. But there is not one place in America where a child can buy a gun legally. I'd love to go after the adults that are selling these children the guns. No child would go into a gun shop. Where are the adults that are selling the guns? Now, they want to have more security checkpoints to go into a school. Some of you, like me, don't have children in the elementary school anymore. You have to go buy an elementary school and see what teachers are dealing with. It's like you're going to a pre-medentry plan. They teach so much security, and I seen some, like you did, very specifically, some fools in Texas, Pastor, that are now saying, the solution to the problem of all these guns is to give the teachers the guns. There's no time for de-escalation. I want our children to reach the bound line for guns. They keep talking about the second commandment. They need to understand the second commandment, place no gun before. But I've got something to say to those that are proponents of Martin Luther. They keep talking about the second commandment, the second commandment. Talk about the second commandment? Oh, wait, hold on, first. Was there another part to that? What are the, the bands in the competition, the ones? My god, that is a huge thing that we have to deal with. Our children are traumatized. And what's our solution? Get over it. That's your friend. He just got, the children are in pain, they're wearing the T-shirts of their classmates. They get the tattoos of their brothers or sisters that love them. I must say, Pastor, and I told my mother I'm going to cry, but it's easy to cry. But that's a good thing, because you can feel certain things. You just never know. Like, sitting up here listening to my friend, Brother Jenkins, and his wife has completely written my record story. And we, I get confronted by someone who has a nice smile, a game of the game, that gives you a handshake, a hug. We talk about, when you're a congressman, I asked him, what are the issues you have? And they would tell you something like, I have two children who left five years ago. Stop running, call, pay your track. Want to show you a picture that they love? This is not a happy day. When I first started running, I went back to see my friend, where it was split so weak. And they don't make it too long. A badly friend, love, appreciate, the other take, they tell you what's wrong. A family friend with love, appreciation, the undertaker can tell you what's wrong. The children are coming in there on the weekends and filling up these year old. It's not natural for parents to have to bury their children. And I want to believe that is our future. What can we do? Our children are using stronger weapons. What would have to happen, hey, yes, is the purpose of education. The child that was in third grade is now going to be most open in fifth grade, that's reading at a seventh or a third grade level. The child that was in eighth grade that didn't have a talent level, that now is going back as a sophomore, is reading at a seventh or a sixth grade level. It wasn't summer learning loss one year. We're talking about a generation that has to be negative. We're talking about a child that was 18 and just graduated, has seen graduation because of COVID, and didn't have grandparents, headed to 16, they can't find, that's not age on the school system. They can't make the work that he wanted to. We don't know, they're going to come over this young generation, I want to be their defender, I'm going to be their champion, God is not a stop, the rich don't expect it, children are making the same deal again, as they are now, they're going to bring something wrong. We have left them dead, I'm going to turn that around. I want to start a future generation that will decide on us like our own, to see these offices. These are the people that we are sending to represent us to all industries and other people around the world. I said, Lord, send me, give me a chance. I love the South Side, I want to be with love, I want to have to be your help, your support, I want to thank you all, I want to ask anyone that volunteered, that signed a petition, that's come out of office, that's done it, a dog stand up at this time. I see two, this is a volunteer party that happened here, Pastor. I want all my volunteers, I want all my volunteers to say, I see you over there, come on, don't do that, don't do that, I would not see you, no, you can't believe, maybe not see you in the morning. Okay, my mother would say, see, okay, real players, I'm going to see you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Today is just the 13th, this is the first day of Earth's building. I've got another ask for you. I think you call for two people. I think you come out of office, we have a phone line, we have specific places to interview you, can't the same, I want to thank you, for everything, daily, for all that you do, very, very, very much. We're going to have a song, and we use this, uh, my recent song, "The Sense of Love." Let's go.
I've been there. And the people who see our way, try to see the light. So I want to be free, for my heart, be free, just for all that you say, it's my life. So I want to be you, to say, bye, oh, say, say, oh, say, say. And the sky, there's another long, shooting hole in the floor. And I'm out, it's far, 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 too. I don't want, I don't want, oh, I want to stay here, just for all that you say. I want to be you, to say, oh, say, bye, oh, say, say. Say, can you take a second, get home, sometimes, come on, say, come on, here, here. Look at the way, and see my face, and be done, say, oh, say, say. Oh, say, say. Come, show something, I'm alive. Sometimes hope, I might live right, with a pretty good thing, looking good, I have, so many. I will sit by it, tell the girl for one thing, my faith I can believe, great and beautiful, yeah. Sometimes, oh, I have, somebody, oh, I have, somebody, maybe I'm not the law, maybe I'm not the whole of the side. Somebody, oh, I have, oh, say. She's not fake, looking good, I have, so many, wait, I'm not a lady, say. All I know, I'm ready, it's me, that's what we say in church.
Wonderful, wonderful. Mother, thank God for you, come on, clap your hands. Everybody, everybody, listen, you can give $5, you can give $10, you can give $20, you can give anything that you have. For this man, who is the man for the Congress. Come on, clap your hands. One more time, this was a great, great night, and we praise God for it, all right? As we bow our heads, and then ask, can we give cash? In the back, at the desk, you can give cash, all right? And we appreciate you doing that, here, all right? Our Father and our God, we thank you for what you have done in the life of our brother, in the life of our Father, even among the family, we thank you for Jonathan. We pray even now that you would have your way with him through this election, and we thank you for what you have already done. We give you praise, we're looking with excitement, we're looking for victory, and we give you glory. We know your hands are up, and we ask you to do it. Bless us and bless them who are in a position to make the difference even now. Bless us as we go from this place to our homes, and Lord, cover us by your grace. In all of your ways, we acknowledge you, knowing that you will not return our name. It is in the name of Jesus Christ, we do pray, and the people of God say, amen, and amen.